All right, so 6:01. Good evening. I'm David Assett. I'm the chairman of the zoning board of appeals for the city of Fall River. It's 6:01 PM on Thursday, September 16th, 2021. We are meeting at one government center in the first floor hearing room pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, Subsection F. I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Fall River Government TV, Alex Mello, is recording both the video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now, and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Our recording secretary this evening is Christine Sylvia, lady to my immediate right. Present this evening are permanent members Jim Corkins, Joe Pereira, and alternate member Ricky Sahady. Also in attendance this evening is the director of planning for the city of Fall River, William Kenny, and assistant planner Caitlin Young, the lady to my far left. Christine, have all petitions to be considered and properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the zoning board of appeals and Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A as amended?
Yes.
And I believe you are not recording, you are not doing an independent recording?
No.
I declare the September 16th, 2021 regularly scheduled meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the city of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the board, including the petitioners, abutters, anyone in support, or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the chairman. The board's rules and regulations direct the board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this board is the zoning board of appeals. This board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the city of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the zoning board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the city of Fall River zoning ordinances. The city charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policy for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning board specific matters at the end of this meeting. I don't know if there's a sign-up sheet somewhere, but at the end of the meeting, we'll allow you to address the board on any zoning specific matter. I disclose that an official copy of the Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the city clerk's office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. I also disclose that a new recodified edition approved by the planning board and city council in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A, Section 5, now in its red grapefruit cover, is the official copy. Are there any questions before we start? So for those of you out there who are petitioners or here in favor or opposed to certain items, one of our board members, we have a four-member board for most of the items. Traditionally, the board has allowed, if you do not want to go forward with a four-member board, you want a full five-member board, will table your action, your petition, until the October 21st meeting. So you may think about those as I go through the list. I know that agenda item 01, Angel Estrella Molina, 417-421 East Main Street, this petition has been started with a five-member board. We only have three members, so that petition administratively cannot be heard because we don't have enough to do it, and that will be continued until the October 21st meeting. So is that any objection to that?
No, I can't have an objection.
No, I know you can't, but I'm asking if there's any objections out there to this particular item 01. Jeff, I'll skip 02. Number one, poignant signs, 1168 Highland Avenue, lot S302. We received, no, no, you all right, madam?
No, we're leaving. We're all set.
Oh, you sure?
Yeah, she came for one.
Oh, you came for 01. So 01, because we don't have enough members, they will, I shouldn't say, I don't have a crystal ball, but I would think by the next meeting, we should have the full members here to vote on that petition. But you need to come, thank you for coming out. You need to come out because you're concerned about it. Mr. Aguirre is the gentleman who is bringing the petition for Mr. Molina, so you can contact him if you want to talk to him before the October 21st meeting. Okay? Thank you.
I do, but it's in my car.
Well, do you have a pencil or paper? I know you have a pencil or paper. Dan, give him a number so they can call you if they want.
508. 648. 323 sales. That's my cell. Now everybody knows. Nobody calls me.
I'm gonna send you a text message.
Okay. My phone's in my car tonight. I make sure that it doesn't go off during meetings.
No, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you all. So agenda item 01, number one, poignant signs, 1168 Highland Avenue. We received communication on that particular item requesting that that item be tabled until the October 21st meeting. So if anybody is here for number one, poignant signs, 1168 Highland Avenue, that one administratively is not going to be heard this evening.
Do we need a vote?
We can have, we can have a vote to officially transfer it to the October meeting. So we received that communication, 1168 Highland Avenue, lot S302. Special permit request to install one-sided, non-illuminated ground sign on the front lawn to identify the residences at Adams House. Anyone here in favor, anyone opposed to this petition? So the motion or the request was to table it until the October 21st meeting. Can I have a motion to?
I move that we table it until the October 21st.
October 21st, second by Joe Pereira. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Jim? Ricky?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. So that's on October 21st meeting. So Brian Pires, 163-165 Hafford Street, if some, is that yours, Dan? You want to go forward with that?
Yeah, I actually, I think, I think we're good to go forward with everything.
Okay. So I had a request for agenda item number three. Todd Sampson, 410 Joseph Street, lot U2112.
Yep.
You want, so my understanding is that there was, there was a request that there is a, there is some other engagement that they need to be at, so they're asking to go out of turn. So if you want to do number three, Todd Sampson first, we'll do that. One of them will go with the rest of the agenda. Jeff, I don't know, tell me what you want to do.
We're gonna table it, Mr. Jeff.
Okay, so before we do that, agenda item 02, Cat Management LLC, care of attorney Jeffrey P. Madeiras, 627 South Main Street, lot G53 and 4. This was tabled from the August 19th, 2021 meeting. This was a petition for a variance request pursuant to Section 86, floor 82, to convert an existing non-conforming structure from a club restaurant to a multi-unit mixed-use property consisting of 11, one in two-bedroom units, two office units, and a private executive club lounge in the basement, waiving all dimensional requirements, sidelines, and setbacks in a BL district, and varying parking requirements if necessary. So attorney Madeiras is making a motion now because we only have four members to listen to it, is asking to table it to the October 21st meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Is there anyone here?
Motion to table.
Wait, wait, let me see if anybody's in favor or opposed. If anybody came out in favor of this petition, or if anyone came out opposed to this petition? Yes?
Academic Club's represented. They're, they're in favor of it.
All right. Attorney John Mitchell?
For the academic.
For the academic, in favor of the motion to continue till October 21st. Thank you. All right, so that's all we have. Motion, Joe, I think you made the, the motion to continue. Second by Jim Corkins. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. Okay, so that one, Jeff, is on October 21st.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll go, Dan, if you want, number three, and then we'll just work down the agenda.
David, after three, if you want to take me, Jenny McNulty, I'm fine.
You are?
After we get this one.
Okay.
No sense in hanging on.
All right.
But let's get the Sampsons out of here.
So number three, Todd Sampson, 410 Joseph Drive, lot U2112. This is a special, a special permit request pursuant to Section 86, 426B, to construct a 25-by-35-foot garage addition to the existing single-family dwelling. The existing parcel and structure are pre-existing non-conforming with regard to the R30 district. Do you have that, the petition? The reason why I'm asking, I want to see whether or not it's signed or not, because the ones that you scanned didn't have a signature.
Yes, and I did get the copies that were signed.
All right, so if we, or yours?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. For the record, my name is Dan Aguirre. I'm a senior project manager at SciTech, part of Civil Environmental Consultants with addresses here in the city, as well as Rainham, Massachusetts. Here this evening on behalf of Todd Sampson, who is the owner of the real estate at 410 Joseph Drive, and as the chairman read in, this is a...
Dan, excuse me, we, we don't have a copy. We'd like to get a copy of what we're looking at. You don't have a copy?
Number three?
No, what's, what's, number three is not that.
There you go.
No, we do.
Oh, you do? You do. Make sure you have it.
It was here all along.
You have it, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Again, on behalf of Todd Sampson, the owner of the real estate at 410 Joseph Drive, which is up off of Merian Street, if you're not familiar with the area. It is a 12,690 square foot lot with 100 feet of frontage that was created prior to the institution of the R30 zoning district, which this area now falls in, that requires 150 feet of frontage, 30,000 square feet, with building setbacks of 50 feet front yard, 25 feet in the side yard, and 25 feet in the rear yard. The petition that we filed with you is pursuant to Section 86, 426B, which is a special permit and/or finding. And what we're requesting this evening is that the board make a finding pursuant to 86, 426B, allowing the construction of this garage addition. And I'll read you that section.
It's just a garage. It's not, slash.
There is, there is a garage addition, there's a second floor above the garage.
But is that living space?
Yes, absolutely.
It is?
Yes. So what they did, they'll be carrying the height of the existing structure over completely, which is right now, it's a, it's a raised ranch. So it's a garage slash addition.
And you must, do you, you have the new book, but I'm surprised that instead of having uppercase B's, as with a lowercase b is what was on the agenda, which was throwing me out. That was the old, the old book, the old ordinance of lowercase b.
This is uppercase B.
It just has uppercase.
My application is uppercase B.
Go ahead.
In, in a conformance with the, with the bylaw.
No, I'm just asking because it...
You're right, though. So let me read this section of the bylaw in case the board's not familiar with it. "In the event that the building inspector determines that the non-conforming nature of such structure would be increased by the proposed reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change, the Board of Appeals by a finding, which shall not require a supermajority, allow such reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change where it determines that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure." So when we look at that section of zoning and we look at the lot that we have, we have a non-conforming parcel, we have a non-conforming structure, it does not meet the building setbacks. There is also an existing garage that will be moved, that currently sits 10 feet off of the side property line.
So it's going to be moved, not raised?
Did we finally decide? It will be removed. They, they are going back and forth with whether or not it was just going to be relocated?
No, because the plan said moved, and my, as I was reading, I thought it said removed, so I want to make sure that...
The applicant was back and forth.
I got it. So there's no question it's going to be removed?
No question it's going to be removed from the property, and the proposed garage addition will be further from that dividing line than the existing garage structure is right now. So if you went out to the property, you would see, it's kind of like a Quonset hot steel frame garage structure. That will be removed, and they will be basically extending the existing structure, the front line of the building running directly over, for a distance of 25 feet, back 35 feet, and that will now be a front-loading garage with living space above.
Connected to the house.
Connected to the house. It is not, it is not separated.
It's not, okay.
So you will be able to...
It will remain a single-family.
That is correct. The existing structure had a garage at the basement level at one point in time, and that's, it has been remodeled. So they now don't have a garage space. They're needing more living space, having a young family. The applicants have proposed this garage, large enough that they can keep a number of vehicles and boats or jet skis and things of that nature in the garage structure, and have ample living space above to extend the living space in the structure.
Okay.
So when we look at B and we look at the existing nonconformity, what the board is charged with is making that determination that this proposed extension, alteration, or change is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. And I would...
It's also a special permit, and it's also less than a supermajority to grant it.
That, that is correct. And I would offer that clearly, the construction of this addition and this garage is substantially less detrimental, one in the fact that it would be further away from the property line than the existing structure aesthetically.
Existing one is 10, this is going to be 12.
Is 10, this would be 12. Aesthetically, clearly, the extension of this well-maintained home would definitely be an asset to the neighborhood, removing this somewhat of a commercial steel garage that currently sits on the property.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
Members of the board, any questions on this particular petition?
No, drove by.
Okay, let me, no? Is there anyone here in favor of this, Greg, are you here for this petition?
No, no, he's for Seabury Street later.
Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
There's no kitchen involved.
No, the, the existing...
Just bedrooms.
The home, once they're done, I mean, we're getting this footprint first before we go to an architect. If, if, if kitchen space is installed, the existing kitchen space will be removed or remodeled. I don't know to what extent the remodel is going to take place, but the second floor will be living space.
Okay. All right, so that's the petition, that's what we have before us. Director of Planning, Mr. Kenny, is there any information that you think that the board should know before we start deliberating?
No, I think, Dan Songrey tied it up exactly right. Just curious, do you propose to go through site plan review with this?
Of course you're gonna make it.
You have to. I don't think there's a choice in that.
Well, no, to be honest with you, though, attorney Rumsey, I mean, the board, of course, can make it a condition, but in terms of, Rumsey had made a determination that some additions do not require, and that's up to the building inspector, but if the board wants to make that part of it, this is a fairly large piece.
It's a lot, it's a lot. So I think, so if the board is inclined, then maybe that should be a condition, but...
It's going to fall basically entirely over asphalt, so going through site plan review won't be, won't be a difficult issue.
All right, so members of the board, we have no other questions. We've heard from the director of planning. Would the assistant director of planning have any comments that, no?
She agrees with me.
Well, this is one board where you can disagree with the boss if you'd like.
Especially, she's only been here three days.
Tonight, Mr. Planner, tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval subject to side review.
So your finding, okay, so your finding is that the reconstruction, or extension, or alteration, or change, where it determines that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure? That's the finding?
That's.
Okay. So that's, that's Jim Corkins' motion with the added condition that site plan review be involved. Do we have a second on that motion?
We have a second.
Second, Ricky Sahady. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. That petition is granted. Thank you.
If you want to take a turn.
I'm gonna take, I'm gonna, Mr. McNulty, do you mind if I take you out of, out of order?
No, no.
Just because you're sitting around, and let's get rid of number seven. Agenda item number seven, the Roman Catholic bishop of the city of Fall, of Fall River, 440 Bradford Avenue, lot G445. This is a, so, no, it's the end, this is, this was a letter, motion for a determination by the board on condition three of a decision that the zoning board granted April 19, 2018, that in doing the title examination, it was determined, and it was determined by me, that the bishop and the conveyances failed to record an affidavit that they had separated the utilities, except, and the reason why they didn't do it, and Mr. McNulty will tell us this, that it was vacant property, the, the buildings had been raised and it was just vacant properties. There's been four conveyances of the properties, and it was just because the chairman in doing a title examination made the determination and found that there wasn't any affidavit, and I asked Mr. McNulty to ask the board, under the superintendence of 40A, Section 14, that the board can make this determination, so it'll all tie together, and nobody will be coming back before the board in the future. So is there anything else that I should say?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I couldn't have said it better myself. Thank you to Mr. Aguirre for his courtesy, simple request for determination that because this is vacant land, there are no utilities to separate, and therefore no affidavit to be recorded.
Okay, so that being said, for that specific numbered paragraph, numbered three condition, because it was, it was inadvertent on the part of the bishop, so if we can get a determination that no affidavit needs to be filed, that there's been compliance with the variance that was granted on April 19, 2018, I think administratively that should take care of any title problem that may be kicking around out there.
He just wanted to...
Is there anyone in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay.
I move that we grant the waiver of the condition.
Number three of the filing, of the recording of the...
Of the previous decision.
Okay. Do we have a second? Second, Ricky Sahady, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Jim Corkins, yes.
Yes.
Ricky Sahady, yes. Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McNulty. Thank you. Thank you all. So let's now jump to agenda item...
Two.
We don't, didn't we do that, Jeff Madeiras? We already did you.
No, no.
So agenda type, Byron Pires, 163, right, Brian Pires?
Brian Pires.
Brian Pires, 163-165 Hafford Street, lot L520. Special permit request pursuant to Section 86, 423B, to subdivide the existing parcel of land into two parcels, leaving an existing family, an existing multifamily dwelling on one parcel, while leaving an additional multifamily dwelling on the second parcel.
Good evening again for the record, Dan Aguirre of SciTech CEC. Here this evening on behalf of Brian Pires, who owns the real estate at 165 Hafford Street. On this existing parcel now, which is comprised of approximately 88, 820 square feet, 70 feet of frontage, there is an existing multifamily dwelling to the rear, and an existing multifamily dwelling to the front. There is an existing driveway that currently accesses parking area that sits between the two buildings, so that parking is to remain. We have filed a petition with this board with regards to Section 86, 423B, which allows by special permit subdivision of, of a parcel of land when it has residential structures on it that predate subdivision control law of 1954, which is clearly the case here. It is a lowercase b on this one, for sure. So what, so what I have done is, we have shown on this plan for you, to make it a little bit easy to understand, there will be an access easement that allows vehicular traffic over that straddled lot line, and then there would be parking to either side of that, the same parking that currently exists on the property. Utilities, excuse me, have already been separated. As you can see, we've shown the water stubs that are out there as well, and I, from what I understand, sewer has also been separated, but of course, a condition stating such with an affidavit is more than acceptable.
Yeah, no, I don't want you saying, unless you know, so put the affidavit if you're going to do it. Yes, go ahead.
That's correct. And in a case normally like this, you would also put in a condition of no fences along that interior lot line, or the, the side lot line running down the existing home up at 165. So with that, if you have any questions regarding this proposal, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. I'm sorry, just, the fencing is, could you...
No fencing.
The no fencing is...
So no fencing along this line or this line?
Okay, got you.
No fencing along the north or the west?
The north and west of parcel one. Except they want to put exterior.
North and west of parcel one, so it's not going to impede the access easement.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Members of the board, any questions on this particular project? I think the assessors' records show that these two buildings were erected in 1900 or before, so I, my research gets me that it complies with the, the underlying requirements of 86, 423, uppercase B. So the board needs to make a finding that the way that's being proposed, that the division is made in a way to maximize the use of the proposed lot, specifically access, parking, and yard area. So if we find that, and it's done as a special permit, we can make the determination. If we think that it's not being done in that fashion, then we should deny the petition. So I get a motion to grant those petitions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find that the subdivision of the property as proposed would not be detrimental, or would be, would maximize the parking and...
Maximizes the use of the proposed lot, specifically access, parking, and yard area? Is that...
Yep, that's where we're getting.
And we have, as the condition, affidavit that utilities have been split, be recorded within, at the registry of deeds within one year?
Is that a subsequent motion, or is this a...
No, as part of the motion that...
This isn't bifurcated, okay?
It's not bifurcated, so you can put it all together.
Yeah, right, that, that the certificate be recorded of separation of utilities.
Okay, and that no fencing along the north and west of parcel one as shown on the plan?
Right.
Okay, so that's...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before you go too far, just in case Christine wrote it down certainly, you had said one year, the special permit would run for two.
No, yes, special permit for two years. The grant would be for two years, but the recording of the affidavit within one year or before, you can make it two years, I don't...
Yeah, well, if we don't sell it to the end.
So make it, make it consistent, two years, or before one of the properties are conveyed.
Of course, yeah.
You and I look at each other and say, of course, but then we have Mr. McNulty coming down because he's gone, but just, you know, you and I understand, yes, that should happen, but let's make sure that it's clear. Christine, you got all that?
I got all that.
Thank you. So that being said, so that's Jim's motion, two-year grant, special permit. Any discussion on the motion? Oh, do we have a second?
Move to a second.
Joe Pereira, second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Hearing none. Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. All right, so that petition is granted with those conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, let's go to number four. Neilia Almeida, twenty-six Hill Street, lot L sixteen zero zero seven nine. This is a special permit request pursuant to eighty-six, four twenty-six B, should be uppercase to construct a second-story addition to the existing one-story single-family dwelling. The existing parcel and structure are pre-existing non-conforming with regard to the S, single-family district.
Oh, I see why you're saying the lowercase b, because the agenda reads lowercase b.
Yeah, no, that's, and what I'm...
I thought you were referring to me.
No, no.
You were speaking to Christine, I got you.
No, but I'm thinking someone, no, but I'm thinking someone, when I was reading the application, whether or not we were using the old book, it doesn't change, but I just wanted to make sure that we're there, that's all, that we're dealing... No, it's not me just being, you know...
I'll try harder next time.
You're fine, you're fine. It was, I...
Good evening. Again, for the record, Dan Aguirre of Sitec C E C. Here this evening on behalf of Neilia Almeida, who is the owner of the real estate at twenty-six Hill Street. Similarly to the petition before you for the Samsons, this application is filed pursuant to section eighty-six, four twenty-six B. The applicant seeks relief from the city of Fall River zoning bylaw through the grant of a finding and/or special permit that the proposed extension, alteration, or change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. The applicant proposes to construct a second-story addition to the existing one-story single-family home. The existing parcel and structure are pre-existing non-conforming with regards to the S district. The proposed addition will not increase any non-conforming setbacks to any property line. So the proposal before you is to clearly put a second floor on this existing one-story structure, and the board can move that with a finding.
Just so I'm clear, the addition is going up. The footprint is already there, so the dot, I don't know whether it was a...
The dot is actually the roof overhang.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I was looking at that and I couldn't really...
Yeah, no, yeah. The dash line is...
So the footprint, the footprint is what it is, I'm just going up in the same planes.
Going straight up one story. Exactly. Not exceeding the height requirement in the S district.
Okay. And just to be clear, to remind everyone, under eighty-six, four twenty-six B, this is, the building inspected determines that the non-conforming nature of such structure would be increased by the proposed reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change, the Board of Appeals made by a finding, which shall not require a supermajority required by Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty-eight, six, allows such reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change where it determines that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. So, that's the section, that's the section that we're dealing with. This is the proposal on Hill Street. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition?
I have a question.
Wait, we have a question before...
Yeah, just what is going to be comprised in the second floor? Will it be separate?
No, it's not intended for separate...
It will be just additional bedrooms or...
Right, it'll be just an expansion of the existing single-family structure.
And the house will remain a single-family dwelling?
Absolutely, yes.
Right, okay.
So if you, if at some point, ladies, I'll start with you and I'll work to my...
You said if anybody approved, I have...
Yeah, no, if any...
Yeah.
No, no, is anyone in favor of this? Will you identify yourself for the record, please?
Jennifer Almeida.
Hello, Nadia Almeida.
Hello.
So you're in favor of your petition?
Absolutely.
The lady next to you?
I'm Hannah Mello. I also favor, I'm her sister.
Okay. Is there anyone else in favor of this petition? Yeah, damn. Is there anyone opposed to this petition? Attorney Jeffrey Medeiris, you're opposed to this, please tell us why.
Yes.
Please, come down.
Attorney, members of the board, my name is Attorney Jeffrey Medeiris. I am here on behalf of the neighbors, Mr. John and Esmeralda Reese. They're located at thirty-eight Hill Street, which is...
Direct abut to the north.
To the north. Their arguments would be that they feel that the proposed structure would be more detrimental to the neighborhood, seeing that the structure, the way it stands now, is a large structure. There was an addition that was placed on the structure back in, I think, the nineties when the current owner's parents owned the home. The footprint of the house right now is fifty by thirty feet, which is, the first floor is fifteen hundred square feet. I went to Patriot Properties on the assessor's website, and it says that there's currently four bedrooms, one bath, kitchen, and also has a finished basement. So combined would be three thousand square feet already, and then they want to put another fifteen hundred square feet on top. The sidelines are very close to my client's property. It's probably about nine feet from the structure located at thirty-eight Hill Street to the structure that is currently pre-existing non-conforming. Mr. Reese sees that it's going to increase the traffic on Hill Street, it's going to be an extremely large structure, probably towering on that narrow roadway, approximately thirty feet. Those streets, Sherman, Hill Street, Ratcliffe Street, Blaine, are very narrow roadways. I don't have a plan in front of me, so I don't know the width of that road. With regard to the amount of bedrooms, I don't know if there's a conceptual building plan that has been presented to the board, or it's just that to add a second floor to the structure. So, my clients feel that based on the Fitzsimmons versus the Board of Appeals of Chatham, this board can see that based on the issues presented, that they can find it more detrimental to the neighborhood. The parking, if there's already four bedrooms there now, how many people are going to live in the structure? The parking is going to be tough on that road, as well as safety concerns, the new structural overhang, my client's roofline, which could cause rescuing situation...
You're saying that there's an existing encroachment? Or there's going to be...
No, 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 not encroachment, but based on, for view and sightlines, my client's concern with...
Light and air.
Their private, I understand that, Mr. Chairman, but...
No, no, I'm saying your argument in opposition is it will be infringing on light and air...
Light and air, that is correct. Also, fire and safety concerns, if there is anything that occurs on the proposed or occurs in the proposed structure, so therefore my client respectfully asks that this board find that it's more detrimental and deny the special permit.
Let me ask Mr. Aguirre to respond to that.
If I can please respond. First of all, the board is not charged with making the determination if it is more detrimental. The board is charged with making the determination if it is substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformity. This structure will not be constructed on top of the street. It actually exceeds the front yard requirement for this zoning district, which is under twenty feet, and you can see that the existing structure is set back further than most of the homes that are on the street, inclusive to house number thirty-eight. So when we are looking at a single-family structure, the zoning bylaw clearly states that we are required to provide two off-street parking spaces for each residential unit. We exceed that number already. Parking is not based upon the number of bedrooms. The applicant hasn't even given any thought yet to how they're going to re-alot the space inside. Is it to make a kitchen bigger, a living room bigger on the first floor, and then just move the existing bedrooms to the second floor? Basement living space does not qualify as living space unless there's adequate light and air, which I did not see basement windows that meet those criteria. So a finished basement is not considered living space, specifically for living purposes and for bedroom purposes. I can't see how the board could find that putting a second story on this building, which is allowed in the district, not exceeding the height requirement, would be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformity, which would be those side yards. If we were to put an addition on this on the first floor level, we would then need other relief for not meeting building setbacks in the rear or even in the front.
But I asked that question early on. This is the planes of...
Straight up.
Straight up. You're not, you're not deviating from what's...
That is correct.
You're just going up.
Where other types of additions would require...
The house is remaining a single-family.
That's correct.
And you're not going greater than the thirty-five feet height of the district.
That is correct.
Okay. No, I just wanted to be clear that it's not, that it's just going up. We're not adding this way or that way, and what's happening in the interior structure of the house is beyond the scope of what this board is doing if it's remaining a single-family house.
That is correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I understand Mr. Aguirre's argument, and even though I said more detrimental, I would say that it would be significantly...
Well, the language of the order in sentence will not be substantially more. That's a determination for the board, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure.
So that is, that is correct. So we, I do understand that, and I argue for my client that it's substantially more detrimental. I have a familiarity with the piece, it's...
Not that far from the ancestral home.
That is, thirty-eight Hill Street was where I was born, when I was a child. The proposed structure was owned by my uncle. The house at the corner of Hill Street and Locust was my grandparents' house. So, based on the size that it is currently, even a single floor of fifteen hundred square feet, if you go up, add another fifteen hundred on top of that, that's three thousand square feet. On a lot, that's roughly fifty-eight hundred, or fifty-seven, fifty square feet.
Five thousand eight hundred and twenty, according to the stamped plan line.
So that's an extremely large structure on that lot. Who's to say in the future that the parties don't come before this board and ask to convert it to an in-law apartment or a second apartment?
That, I don't have a crystal ball. What was before the board, but what we have before the board is a petition for this addition.
So my argument would be that it's substantially more detrimental...
I hear you, I think the board members hear you, that you think it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure.
I rest.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Aguirre?
I have nothing else, sir.
What, Madam, you own the house, I'll listen to you again.
Yeah, I, I don't know what I have the right to say or not, but...
You can say anything.
I could say, I'm going to say everything, but traffic-wise, there's no traffic. It's her car, she's going to be moving into the house.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, and that's why we need the space upstairs. We're going to add three bedrooms and a full bath. That's all. That's all we're doing, three bedrooms and a full bath for her and her son. Traffic is two cars. You know, we don't have, I don't know what the traffic-wise is that they were talking about. You know, traffic, you know, more traffic, makes no sense.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
And the current first floor, it's not a four-bedroom.
It's not a four-bedroom.
Okay.
How many are there?
Two. Right now, there's two.
Okay. Go ahead, Dan, you go.
As I stated before, single-family occupation, single-family home is required to have two off-street parking spaces, which I think you can probably fit four right now.
We can fit four in my home, I think.
No, I got it, I'm in. It's the interior, I mean, what you do in the interior, provided you do it to code, you're, you're fine. And it's a special permit, and this board has to make the determination whether or not that change that you're proposing, in the magic words, "uh-huh," substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. And that's going to be up to this board to decide. So if there's anybody else in favor, anyone else opposed? Mr. Kenny, do you have any comments on this particular project?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Young?
No, thank you.
Okay. Members of the board, can I get a motion to grant, a motion to deny? Have they met that it's substantially, that it's either not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, or do we think that it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood?
Mr. Chairman, I find that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and we will grant the special permit.
Okay. So Jim Corkins makes a motion that the finding is that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Do we have a second on Jim's motion? So I think that was Joe first, I heard Joe Pereira second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. Okay, so that petition is granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Two-year, so the special permits that are before the board, if we're granting them, should all be, I think Jim Corkins wants to keep them, two years, so I don't have you coming back every year for an extension. So it'll be for two-year grants unless otherwise, okay?
Great.
Agenda item number five, two, I saw Greg Brilliant, two-seventy Seaberry Street Realty Trust, two-seventy Seaberry Street, lot N twenty-seven fifty-nine. Special permit request pursuant to section eighty-six, four twenty-four and four twenty-five to convert the existing commercial-use building into an ice cream novelty shop. That's, so that's, yeah, number five, but I'm going to ask you the, I'm going to ask Dan the question before we start.
We're actually going to request that it be tabled, so if you wanted to...
Oh, no, my question was, my recollection on that particular project, that was an ice cream shop at one point in time.
It was.
I was looking for a variance or a grant, and I was trying to figure out why you were here.
It's been greater than two years.
No, but if it was, if it was a variance, I was looking for a variance.
Right, no, there isn't one.
Oh, there...
But the, but the pre-existing non-conforming use of an ice cream shop has gone.
But I thought it was, but I thought, I would have bet that there was a variance that granted that use.
I would have thought so too. I believe there was a variance that allowed the subdivision of the parcel potentially at some point in time, but it has been used for separate, different commercial uses since then.
Yeah, no, no, but I know, at one point...
Because it used to be a convenience store that had ice cream in it.
Was it a convenience store that had ice cream in it? That's...
And it is a great petition, however, with the lack of a five-member board, discussing with the client, we would like to table the matter until next month.
Okay, we don't have a five-member board to give you that, if you want to table it until the October meeting.
That would be our question.
So let's see, is there anyone in favor of this petition that came out this evening? Is there any, you came in favor or opposed to it, sir?
The applicant.
Okay.
I didn't know, I'm sorry.
Yeah, how about, I saw Greg Brilliant said he was here for...
Well, Greg's involved with this.
So he, so I don't need him to...
He represents the buyer.
I don't need him to come back in to...
No, no. He's had a rough week.
Who, Greg?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll pray for him. So, members of the board, we don't have a full five member, the request is to table it to the October meeting. Can I get a motion to table it to the October twenty-first meeting?
Motion to table.
Motion, Ricky Sahadi, second. Joe Pereira, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Ricky?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Assad, yes. So that one is to the twenty-first, October twenty...
We're rebuilding a big agenda over there.
Thank you.
I don't know how many, I don't know. Number, okay, so let's go in a loop. Agenda item number six, Pamela, A.B. Glass Revocable Trust, thirty-eight Judge Street, lot Y nine ten. This is a special permit request pursuant to section eighty-six, four twenty-six B to construct a second-story addition, deck and porch, to the exist, to the existing one-story single-family dwelling. The existing parcel and structure are pre-existing non-conforming with regard to the S, single-family district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. We are having a run on findings. I mean, how many, how many times have we been with three single-family homes requesting findings? I don't think...
No, but that's...
I don't think I've done a handful in twenty-eight years, to be honest with you, and then all of a sudden, three in the, three in the same month.
That's it, the run is over.
So you guys are now pros at eighty-six, four twenty-six, capital B. So I am here this evening on behalf of the landowner, who is Pamela Glass of the Pamela A.B. Glass Revocable Trust, who owns this cottage home down on thirty-eight Judge Street, which sits on the westerly bank of the south of Watuppa Pond. If you've been down to the property at all, it is a one-story cottage that is in dire need of renovation. Ms. Glass does have a buyer for the property, and they are here this evening, and I'm glad that they did come. But this petition before you is to reconstruct the existing building, which you see with the footprint that we have. The front porch and the deck to the rear would be additions.
Your eyes get me thinking you want to...
The second floor would have an entire addition over it and extending over the proposed deck as cantilever cover. The relief we're here for this evening is that the existing structure does not meet the building setback to the northerly boundary line. Again, that line will be brought straight up. The proposed deck and the front porch is projected along that existing non-conforming line.
The existing footprint remains.
The existing footprint is staying, but we are adding a second floor.
Yep, you're going up and the deck in the back.
And then we're going front and back, and the front and back easily meet the building setbacks. This property, if it is to be remodeled, will be required to have a new Title V compliant septic system installed, which would be a benefit environmentally to the property as well. It would require site plan review, septic system design, which, there was one done It would require site plan review, septic system design, which there was one done a few years ago, we're not sure if it's still in place, that we would be looking at, at doing that. It may also require a conservation filing for doing work within...
This is the zoning Board of Appeals.
I'm just explaining that it's other permitting, because I can see Mr. Kenny's wheels turning over.
No, no, but, but we're smart on, well, I shouldn't say, yes.
I wanted to say that I gave a thorough, I answered all of his concerns before, before I was finished.
Well, Mr. Kenny isn't a voting member of the board, he can only give his suggestions.
I understand that. But I do appreciate his comments. So again, we're asking that the board make a finding that we're allowed to rebuild or renovate the existing structure, very small, put another floor on it, rear deck and a front porch. It is my understanding, the proposed buyers have spoken to all of the homeowners in the area, and they are enamored that this parcel is going to be reconstructed. This is the last piece in this neighborhood that requires renovations. It sits amongst a bunch of really nice, small cottage-style homes. We've limited the proposal to be in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood, and we would not be increasing in that building setback nonconformity to the north, which allows you to move this through a finding, as we previously discussed tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Off-street parking will be provided at, at least two spaces. Currently, there's scrub grass and a little bit of a gravel driveway, but there will be a formal driveway installed as well.
Okay, so that may be a condition, but also site plan review will also look at that, whether or not pervious, impervious, however, okay. All right, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Yes, would you like to speak, or you just, we identify us, tell us who you are, please?
Yeah, my name is Christopher Moss.
Beth Moss, we're the buyers.
Yeah, that's my wife, and this is going to be the home that we're going to move into and renovate, you know, it's the last super distressed property amongst, like, dense ads and nice properties, and we're just really excited to kind of make it our home.
Yeah, always go to all the neighbors, they're so thrilled, because it's been baked in such a long time.
You did such a good job, they're not here.
They're happy about it.
When they had called me about it, I actually, I was, I was almost aggravated that I didn't find this.
Yeah.
Because it is, it is a little gem of a property.
It's a gem.
It really is.
Okay, okay, Mr. Kenny, any comments on this particular project?
I think Mr. Aguiar already spoke for the Conservation Commission.
Well, I mean, that may, that's going to be some of the things, especially with site plan review, but that's beyond the scope of the zoning board.
Of course.
Ms. Young, any comments, any input? Nope, okay. Members of the board, any questions? Motion to grant with conditions, motion to deny, did they meet the requirements of 86426B?
Mr. Chairman, I made the motion to grant.
Motion to grant, so the finding is that the proposed modifications will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure, and you want to put the condition in there, Ricky, I think I heard you say something about site plan review to make sure that Mr. Kenny has his bite at the apple with the site plan review.
That's okay.
Second.
Second by Joe Pereira, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Jim Clarkins?
Yes.
Ricky Sahady?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes, so that petition is granted with those conditions, and again, the grant's for two years, site plan review. Oh, two off-street parking, Dan authored two, so you had the, so you had the two off-street